Five in five, four, three.
Let me welcome all of you to the March 27th, 2013 meeting of the North Idaho College Board of Trustees. Would you all join me in opening our meeting with a pledge of allegiance to the flag? Please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let me say for the record, we have verification of a quorum to the meeting. All of the trustees are in attendance. I don't have any specific guests that have been indicated for us to introduce tonight, so let's move right on to the review and approval of the minutes. Have everyone had a chance to review the minutes? And do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I had some corrections.
Yes, corrections, Kristy?
Yes. On page... The second page.
Yellow.
The approval of the minutes. Trustee Wood was absent at that meeting. I didn't make the motion. So that needs to be amended.
And the correction you're asking for is what?
I did not make the motion to approve the minutes on February 27th. I was out of town at that meeting.
Well, if it's gender equity, it might have been me.
Right. Well, if not, you want to do it now?
Sure.
Alright, so we'll have that substituted with Meyer rather than Wood. Any others, corrections? Alright, do I have a motion with regard to the minutes?
I move that we approve the amended minutes of both the February 27th meeting and the February 26th meeting.
Okay, thank you. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved as amended. This is a part of the meeting that we have set aside for public comment, and quite often we don't have public comment. But tonight, we have a number of people signed up, and I'm very happy that you were able to join us. And our comments can be made in a respectful manner and must relate to an agenda topic. And I'm going to call you folks in the order in which you signed up. And please feel free to help us with your comments and your ideas with regard to agenda items. The first person on the agenda is Jim Tippett, discussing the K-Tech letter to the board. Jim?
Few questions, if I may, before I read the letter from... I guess fact-checking, if I will, before I read the letter. First, it's my understanding that in 2006, we had a similar discussion about where to locate professional technical facilities. And at that time, we commissioned a company called MGT to do a study. And I'm not sure who commissioned that study, but I'm assuming that it was the trustees and the administration. And do we know what the cost of that study is?
I don't. And we can probably research that and find out, but we have all received copies of that as part of our review up to this point, so we know what you're talking about, but we don't know the cost, I don't think.
Okay, thank you. And from that study, I think we can all agree that the outcome... They suggested that property be purchased on the prairie and professional technical be located at that location. And from that study, NIC then took an option on, I believe, 105 acres. They subsequently took another option the following year, and then in 2008, purchased 40 acres. And K-Tech purchased 20, and Lakeland, I believe, purchased another 40. There was another 10 or so left over that the Meyer family kept. And at that time, we signed an MOU in 2008.
Memorandum of Understanding.
Yes, a memorandum of understanding for those of us that don't know, sorry. And I'm just going to go through a few bullet points in this MOU. One of them was that the Myers were going to offer 100 acres up for sale. They did that. Another was Lakeland School District was going to buy 40 acres. They did that. The remaining 20 acres was going to be for K-Tech. That was done. K-Tech is now built. North Idaho College purchased the other 40 acres. And in this MOU, it is stated that that would be towards professional technical... future professional technical facilities. The last item is number five, and it states that the city of Rathrum agrees not to charge impact fees and reduce other fees in order to help facilitate a professional technical facility. Finally, the parties... The last paragraph of this, I'll read. "The parties agree to do all things reasonable and necessary to facilitate and expedite the plan outlined herein on behalf of the individual entities represented in the group as a whole. It is anticipated that all the land acquisition will be completed within one year of the date of the final signing of this agreement." So from 2008, we go to 2011. K-Tech then passes a bond and starts building about a 55,000 to 65,000 square foot facility that is up and running today. So in my estimation, that adds credibility to the MGT study done in 2006. It adds credibility to the MOU signed in 2008. And then, 2013 or late 2012, we decide to commission a study by RGU, if I'm understanding correctly. Do we know the cost of that study?
I don't. I don't know the cost. Do you know, Ron?
124,700, I believe.
Do we know what the recommendation of that study is?
We're going to hear that tonight. That's part of the report tonight.
And I guess my final question before I read the letter, were they given the MGT study to review before or as part of this?
You know, I know they've been given it, but it's just been recently. I don't know that it was part of their written report.
Okay. So I just kind of wanted to set the stage for our letter. For those of you that don't know, I'm on the governing board of K-Tech, and myself, Ron Nielsen, and then the three school superintendents. Jerry Keen is the president. Mary Ann Rennells with Lakeland, she's here tonight. And Hazel, I'm not sure, I don't think she can make it tonight, Hazel Bowman. Dear trustees and Dr. Dunlap, on behalf of the Cootney Technical Education Campus Governing Board, I'd like to thank you for the continued commitment to the education and training of Cootney County students. The participation between North Idaho College, the Corder Lane, Lakeland, and Post Falls School Districts and the Cootney Technical Education Campus has been outstanding. The assistance that NIC and key staff members have provided to K-Tech has helped us have a highly successful first year of operation. We would very much like to continue and expand this natural partnership as we move forward. The K-Tech Governing Board would request that North Idaho College strongly consider building any future professional technical facilities on the 40 acres it owns directly to the west of K-Tech facility.
Could you speak up just a little bit, Jim?
Sorry, yes, I can. "We believe that the benefits of having K-Tech and North Idaho College professional technical programs adjacent to one another will provide significant benefits to students participating in seamless grades 11 through 14 programs. The shared facilities, resources, and instructors that would be possible with that close proximity will be a boon for both institutions. The obvious benefits of North Idaho College will be the direct pipeline of quality students into your professional technical school. K-Tech students will already be familiar with the North Idaho College professional technical instructors in your quality programs and will naturally want to enroll at NIC. Specifically, we believe that having grades 11 through 14 professional technical campus... that having A grades 11 through 14 professional technical campus will be a very cost-efficient from a construction and operations perspective. The ability to utilize each other's facility and to share faculty will be greatly enhanced if both programs are located next to each other. We believe there are opportunities to share administrative costs as well. We also see the possibility of reduced costs for developing infrastructure at the site. We had a very good working relationship with the city of Rathrum regarding required infrastructure, and we are very confident that the city of Rathrum is highly motivated to have you locate your professional technical facilities in their jurisdiction. While we do not presume to understand all the considerations that you must evaluate regarding the development of new professional technical facilities and their location, there is strong evidence that having our programs located together will be highly beneficial for both of our institutions. In addition, the vision of a single professional technical campus will benefit the region's entire population and economy. Thank you for your consideration. We have a great deal of confidence that you will also see the benefits of this request. Sincerely, the K-Tech Board."
Does that conclude your comments?
Yes.
Thank you very much for that. I failed to add in the beginning that there are two-minute time limits on the comments, and we're not going to hold you to that, because I think these are important comments, and we want to hear from them. I hear from all the people who are commenting, but I appreciate your keeping it concise. Thank you.
Sorry about that, thank you.
Our next individual who signed up is Arthur Putnam, wants to talk with regard to the REC Center. Arthur?
Thank you. As you know, my name is Arthur Putnam, and this is currently my third year here at NIC. I'm also a resident assistant for the resident hall here, as well as a student ambassador for the admissions office. NIC has a lot of things that are offered for students and the community. I'm all about utilizing and using those resources. Many of these resources I use on a daily basis, whether it be the College Skills Center, Health Services, the Mulstead Computer Lab, and the list goes on and on, on and on. But one thing that we do not have is a place for students to exercise that works with their schedule. And the important key word there is "works with their schedule." Students are very busy, and they don't have a lot of spare time. The REC Center is exactly what we need to satisfy those requirements. We all know the importance of exercise and the effects when exercise is not present. REC Center would be a great benefit to students and ultimately, the community. There are more benefits than just providing the students with another healthy service here at NIC. As I mentioned before, I'm also a student ambassador, and as an ambassador, I give tours to prospective students. I show them around the campus and tell them about all the perks we have here at NIC. And I also answer any questions they have. One of the most frequent questions I get asked is, "Is there a place on campus that I can work out?" And I think this goes to show that the REC Center isn't just something that students are thinking about, it's something that prospective students are thinking about. Change can be scary, but I think the REC Center is a change in the right direction, and that's all I have to say.
Arthur, thank you very much. The next individual is... The next individual is Kurt Kimberling on relocation. Kurt?
Kurt Kimberling, recently a new hire here at NIC, is a faculty member. But perhaps I have a different perspective for you guys. I too was a NIC student, actually enrolled in the class that I now teach. I was also part of the student body, which was an invaluable experience for me, you know, throughout my working career. I'm afraid that if this gets moved off-campus, that our students are going to miss out on a cultural benefit from being involved...
Excuse me?
...in the total experience of the college. For me, that was a huge experience. And so, I think culture, the beautiful campus that we have, that we need to enjoy and that students benefit from just by being here, is a wonderful benefit. So as you're considering this, I think there's a cultural aspect that should be addressed and kept in mind. That's all I have, thank you.
Kurt, thank you very much. The next individual is David Munson. With regard to the building location.
Hi, my name is David. I'm a second-year welding student here at NIC. And our building, our lab, is currently off-campus at the industrial park about eight miles from here. And I'd like to suggest that a lot of the students here at NIC are fairly low-income, and driving back and forth from, you know, from home to the college, then back out there to the industrial park is kind of a burden on a lot of the students. We have a lot of our students... One student in my class rides his bicycle to school. And I hear we're talking about moving the welding lab further away from the campus. And I would like to suggest that we would surely put the welding lab and any of the other technical programs on campus for the convenience of students. We have the medical services here, you know, in case one of the students might get hurt. We have a number of other things here on campus that, you know, we have the bookstore right here. And I would really like to see an easier convenience for the future students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Linda Michael.
Good evening. I would like to just have a... Say a couple of things about in support of the REC Center that the students are asking for. We've been talking about this for a long time, off and on. I can't remember which year it started, but it feels like it was a long time ago. And there's a lot of reasons for my support of that. We're part of the American College Health Association, and they have an agenda called Healthy Campus 2010... 2020, it was 2010, and now it's 2020. And one of the things that they are very in support of for a college campus is looking at the overall health of the community. And a REC Center will give the students an opportunity to have easy access without having to pay additional costs to get a membership elsewhere. It provides accessibility in terms of their resources here on campus, which a couple people have actually just spoken to in regards to a different issue. And it will really help provide an increased sense of wellness and health for students, a place that they can connect. All of those things are really core to our mission of student success. Students are more successful if they're healthy, they're more successful if they're connected with each other, and this would be another opportunity that we could provide for them that they actually are willing to provide for themselves and for future generations. It could also be used for staff, and so we're looking... And faculty, so you're really looking at a healthier campus and considering all of the health issues with concerns about obesity and diabetes and hypertension, and giving people an easy access opportunity for those to address some of those issues, I think is really important. So I just want to encourage you and tell you that I support and health services and counseling services fully support the addition of a student REC Center. Not in lieu of enlarged health services, but...
Next is Chase Sanborn.
Hello, I'm Chase Sanborn. I am president of the Wallace City Council. I am here on behalf of all of the students and soon-to-be students of the Silver Valley. Driving over the pass to commute to college is quite a chore, and giving them the opportunity to study here on campus is ideal for our students. Cutting back on the amount of driving they would have to do is extremely important. So we support the building of the new technical facility here on campus. We have a lot of nicely-paying jobs in the Silver Valley with the mines and the mine fab, and we have quite a few students who like to go over to NIC to learn their trades. It's a great way to make quite a comfortable living in the Silver Valley. And we'd just like to throw our support on the facility being here on the NIC campus. Thank you.
Chase, thank you very much. Next is Brett Boyer.
Good evening, trustees, President Dunlap. My name is Brett Boyer. I'm the city representative from Rathrum, the city administrator, and here to give you information in favor of locating the professional technical out on the prairie. I've provided some information, you should have... There's just a quick synopsis, four-page piece of information. We didn't have the full report prior to coming this evening. It's our understanding that would be made public this evening. So our engineer is here this evening, as well as our mayor. So if you have any questions for us on the technical side, as you hear things, our engineer is sitting here. Several years ago, a dream was laid out by a group comprised of leaders throughout the community, including leaders from North Idaho College, that would create a professional technical epicenter within Cootney County. In 2008, a memorandum of understanding, which was mentioned by Jim Tippett earlier, was signed by representatives from North Idaho College, the school districts, the city of Rathrum, the North Idaho Manufacturing Consortium, Cootney County Professional Technical Committee, to do all things reasonable and necessary to facilitate and expedite the plan contained in that MOU. In addition, the agreement lays out the importance of providing a coordinated and seamless educational program for the benefits of students within Cootney County. On the second page of what I provided you are some general positives for locating professional technical at the Rathrum Prairie site. It follows, again, the memorandum of understanding that was signed several years ago by the above-mentioned parties. It pursues the vision that was put out there by all these community members and voters when they voted on K-Tech. Spending dollars elsewhere will delay or put at risk obtaining the goal of a facility on the prairie. It utilizes the 40 acres that have already been purchased and are ready for development, and provides plenty of room to build and design an effective facility. Building on the professional technical synergy that is taking place now with K-Tech is also an important part of this. The city of Rathrum stands ready to assist North Idaho College through the process of construction of this great facility, proposed facility next to K-Tech. And as you've heard from Jim Tippett, you've already seen one large project go through with very little issues. We were there and helped them through the process, and are there to help you as well. Some of the things that the city has done as far as our efforts that go towards our understanding under the MOU, we spent $75,000 last year putting pavement on Lancaster. And again, a couple comments have been made about getting to this site. When you look at the totality from Hayden, Post Falls, Corder Lane, Spirit Lake, the whole area, that site is centrally located and can be reached from Lancaster, Highway 41, and other major highways. In addition, we've agreed to take our water line to Lancaster, which will loop the system. We've waived the annexation fees for all development that came under the Meyer property. Also, no impact fees will be charged. There would be fees for the water and sewer, and I believe they're probably in your plan. The city will also reduce the inspection fees by 10 to 25% as mentioned in the MOU. We realize, and this is a general statement, the cost comparison of different sites may be higher on the Rathrum Prairie site, but in the long run, it would be cost-effective to focus your attention now on one big facility that has plenty of space to grow. In addition, our estimate of infrastructure costs that we understand, we've heard the number of $1 million floating around, is higher than what we estimate. And we've included in the back of this an estimate of the infrastructure costs that you would be required to put in, as well as a map that shows some of the infrastructure requirements. Also included in this are some names that are listed that support this site. Lastly, and just in conclusion, the first part of this epicenter is in place with K-Tech up and running. The plan is moving forward, however, if significant resources for NIC's professional technical education are used elsewhere, it will fragment the effort to achieve the synergy for coordinated synergistic professional technical epicenter. For those reasons, we would respectfully request that you consider the Rathrum Prairie site. Thank you.
Brett, thank you very much. Our last public commentator, Julie Salinas.
Hey, everybody. So since I started school here in 2011, I've been incredibly active on campus, from being a student-at-large and then also being your NIC student body president. The REC Center is something that both myself and Aznec have spent countless hours working on for this year and also many years in the past. And we're a college that promotes health and wellness, yet we don't have the facilities to accommodate that. I know that myself and other students, many other students have to drive miles and take time out of their day to go to other facilities to work out, and it also costs $40 a month or so. When we can have that on campus, and I know that college students, they don't have a lot of money to just throw out to gym memberships, and when we can have this facility on campus, students need this. I know that I love a REC Center on campus, and I've been to many other campuses where REC Centers are just complete hubs for the campus. I know we have this sub, but that REC Center will be something that students will be at constantly, and it just will be a hub for student communication. And I know that NIC is the only college in Idaho that, besides CWI, that doesn't have a REC Center on campus. And I love this school, and I know that a lot of you love this school. And to get more people to this college, that REC Center will be something that will have a ton more students come to this place. And I know that I love this place, and I know with bringing all these other people, that that will create such a great student population, so, yeah.
Thank you, Julie. That concludes the public comment portion of the program and the agenda tonight. Next, we move on to celebrating success, and we have Alex Harris.
If I would have known only REC Center got applause, I would have changed the title. So as many of you know me, my name's Alex Harris. I'm director of student development here at NIC, and tonight, we're celebrating success of what we call our ORS program. ORS is short for Orientation Advising and Registration Program, which started in 2006. Back in 2005, a group of us got together to tackle a problem of retention of students on campus. We actually had a consultant on campus to do some review of what was going on. One of the big things that came out of that was what students knew when they started on campus here about our services and about how to be a college student. And another thing was that our advising and registration process was difficult for students. I don't know how many of you remember the old days of event registration in the gym? You held up a card. That kind of waited in the long line. I know when I came to school here way back when, I waited, I sat in the hallway of the library for four hours. So those were all issues we tried to tackle, and we came up with what's now been in process for seven years. And that's about a two-and-a-half-hour experience for students where they receive orientation. They receive orientation from one of our student leaders here who are trained to do that. Really, the strength of the program is the peer-to-peer relationship that is created there. We have current students who are successful here, who receive a scholarship to lead these groups, and they are able to relate to a student, they share their personal situations and how they are as a student here, and it's able to help new students. Since 2006, over 12,000 new students have been through the ORS program. We average about 1,600 students a year that go through that. Most, every new student goes through it. One of the things we pride ourselves on, and it's definitely not just me, it's a large group from student services and from faculty that work together to put on this program, is that we've been able to adapt and change to changing information to different things. For example, this year, there's a real emphasis on the financial aid process and making students more... more informed about taking loans and the risk of that. So, we're able to add a component about financial aid counseling into the ORS process. So, enough of me talking. I want to introduce two of our current ORS leaders. First up will be Michelle Bristow. She's going to talk about, a little bit about her experience.
Good evening, trustees. Dr. Dunlap. So, my name is Michelle Bristow, and I've had the honor and the privilege of being an orientation leader for the past three years. And as a non-traditional student myself, I realize and understand the importance of reaching out and connecting with people who are coming from all walks of life. Coming back to school can sometimes be a nerve-wracking experience filled with uncertainty and doubt. But knowing that you are not alone makes a world of difference. It has been through my own experiences here at North Idaho College that I am able to recognize and reach out to students beginning their journey here. The work we do as orientation leaders is more than assist students with the process of registration and familiarizing them with the campus. We make connections. We create lasting and meaningful relationships that are vital to their student success.
My name's Livia Burkett, and I've been an ORS leader for one year. As an orientation leader, we are there to make the transition between college and high school as smooth as possible. We strive to make long-lasting connections with incoming freshmen in order to maximize their experiences at NIC. We try to make these first few experiences as positive as possible so that they associate that positive feeling with North Idaho College. As well, we offer a way for students to come in for one day and learn about many services and opportunities that North Idaho College has to offer new students. It is a great way for us to build a bridge for new students and to give them a greater chance of success here at North Idaho College. Thank you.
So, as you can see, besides all the new students getting the benefit from ORS, I also have the benefit of working with current students and watching them be able to go through experiences like this. So, we open to any questions, and they would too if you had any.
Any questions from the board?
Just comments. We love hearing these kind of success stories, and thank you for all the outreach you do on your own to the other students. I have been in your shoes. I was a student here at North Idaho College, working full-time and a student, and I was, I'm not going to say how old I was. Anyway, I was old. And just that outreach and that encouragement really does make a difference, and so thank you for all that you do.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Alex, thank you very much, and thank you very much. Yes.
I don't know if this is appropriate at this time or not, but since we're under the topic of celebrating success, I don't know if he's willing to do so, or if it's, again, if it's appropriate, but I'd love to hear from Philippe for just maybe a moment. His students have had some tremendous success recently. Would it be appropriate?
Actually, I think we're going to cover that under the remarks for the good of the order.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
We do want to congratulate Philippe and his group, yes. The next item on the agenda is the presentation of the Educational Master Plan, and President Dunlap's going to do that for us.
I have one announcement that I was going to make during my remarks later this evening, but I'd like to be able to do that now because the individual here may not remain throughout the entire board meeting, as we have a heavy agenda. Each year, the Coca-Cola Company, the foundation selects one student per state to be recognized for their academic excellence. And this year, the student from Idaho is from North Idaho College. And for the past six or seven years, that student has come from the College of Southern Idaho. So, we are very happy that North Idaho has swept that award this year, and of course, we'll attribute that to Grayden Stanley. But the student that I want to recognize tonight is Michelle Bristow. And she is, as I mentioned, one of 50 academic scholars selected in this country. So, next month, she has the honor of traveling to San Francisco for the AAC/CC conference to be awarded her scholarship and recognized for her academic excellence. So, Michelle, congratulations.
Have fun in San Francisco.
What I'd like to talk about now, Mr. Chair, is our educational plan. And let me back up a few months. When I first got here, as you recall, we hired a number of new individuals, and with that came some uncertainty in terms of what direction the college would be going. And so, one of the first activities we did was to have a workshop involving all of PC to talk about the different ideas and gather data and put together a vision for the college. And out of that, we developed an Educational Master Plan. And this is the Educational Master Plan. It'll be, or it is placed on our website. I'll show you that link at the very end. But the purpose of this Educational Master Plan is as a visioning document that compiles data, analyzes trends, and assists decision-making processes for North Idaho College that is, looks into the future, and is consistent with the college's strategic plan and accreditation core themes, and also institutional priorities. And I'm going to just cover the different components of the plan because we can look at it online and have a greater discussion later. And I know we're rather pressed for time, huge agenda tonight. But the components of the plan include the strategic plan and the accreditation core themes. It looks at the requirements from Complete College Idaho, which is that 60% of Idahoans between the age of 25 and 34 will have a degree or certificate by the year 2020. It talks about new program opportunities. It looks at current enrollments and enrollment trends. There's a discussion of programs, and then there are recommendations and priorities. It also goes into student service priorities and those activities by the NIC Foundation to support the educational mission of North Idaho College. The facilities that, let me just back up a bit, I guess. Maybe I'm going a little bit too fast. Okay. So, under programs, what did we look at? We looked at Professional Technical Education, and we had a section written by faculty and staff. We had a section on general studies, a section on health professions and nursing. We looked at outreach, dual credit, e-learning, the Mulstead Library operation, as well as workforce training and continuing education. And the appendices that were included as part of this plan included Professional Technical Workforce Education, Professional Technical Education Enrollment, and the backlog we have with that, RGU Professional Technical Education Program Study, Testing Center Summary Report, NIC-owned and leased facilities, the EMSI Economic Impact Study that was produced earlier this year, and the college budget. In terms of facilities, these are the facilities that the educational plan addresses as important to the future of the college. Clearly, the number-one priority is a Professional Technical Education facility. Now, we did not recommend a site location. We left that in your good hands. And so, we know that's a major topic tonight and will be of further discussion in the next month or two. We also recognize the need for a new gym, an athletic center, and that's consistent with us looking at being a partner with an event center project, and we've just formed a committee to begin looking at that based on the guidance that you provided me at the last board meeting. This discusses a joint-use facility, which would be a classroom facility that would be utilized between University of Idaho, LCSC, and North Idaho College, as well as having a joint student services operation, which would provide some economies of scale. It also addresses the Student Recreation Center, and you're going to hear more about that tonight. And then there's a section that looks at a myriad of funding options that may not be familiar to most individuals, and I would encourage people to take a look at that section. In terms of programs, we have a new Avista Entrepreneurship Program that is beginning this fall that is underwritten by the Avista Corporation. Medical lab technician is in high demand. We've spoken with the three hospitals from Bonner, Bonner's Ferry, Sandpoint, and Cootney Medical Center. We have an aerospace grant that is important to a fairly significant industry cluster within North Idaho, and the grant requires us to put in place several training programs. And we'll have a portion of that up and running in the fall, as will be the Avista Entrepreneurship Center. We have, we're part of a consortium with other colleges and universities in the state to look at putting in place a physical therapy assistant program, and then the accreditation of our pharmacy technician program. And we recently went through an accreditation process with the medical assistant program and received final confirmation of that. And in my remarks later tonight, I'll talk about the results of the college accreditation that we went through and finished today. In terms of student services, a high priority for us is to develop a one-stop-shop for students so they don't have to run across campus to a variety of stops to get financial aid, advising, counseling, admissions, registration, and those type of support services that they need to help them be successful. Also, the use of data is becoming more and more and more important, and that will be articulated more about our accreditation report. Technology is something that we need to look at in terms of automating our services, not only in the delivery of classroom instruction, but also in our business operations and our student support. We need to implement sound enrollment management practices, ensure that we meet our enrollment targets and priorities are achieved, and work within the confines of an enrollment management system. We need to implement safety, sound safety and risk management practices, and we've already restructured that and begun to upgrade many of those practices. And then ensure universal design is proactively influencing and directing the future courses for the college. Now, universal design, for those unfamiliar with that, relates to providing services to students that are, that have disabilities in some form or fashion. But it covers the entire depth and breadth of the institution, not only from facilities design, but how instruction is delivered and how student support is rendered for those individuals that need that extra support. In addition, we look to the NIC Foundation to support the priorities of the college and assist where they can. Right now, 86% of the 17-plus million dollars that they have in assets is restricted to scholarships. And last year, they provided over $700,000 to, in scholarships to over 800 students. And then they also provide grant opportunities for individuals on campus that can apply for grants that will support their programs. And one of the examples last year was that our student supplied for a grant to commission a piece of art that would be hung in the Student Union Building, and that is right outside the door and on the wall. And then they will be willing to assist with fundraising for capital campaigns for us. In terms of growth strategies, we've seen enrollment level off in this country and in some degrees begin to decline. On your table is our spring enrollment report. We've seen a decline this semester of about 5%, which is consistent with what has happened nationwide. And actually, there has been greater declines, for example, in Washington State. And so, we believe that we need to implement growth strategies that will help mitigate the effects of those general trends. And we can do that through increasing our presence in dual credit. Last year, we served approximately 1,000 students in the dual credit program. In distance learning or e-learning, last year, we had 5,007 students that took an e-learning class from North Idaho College. And when you combine e-learning and dual credit, we think there is enormous opportunity in serving our rural areas and reaching more students in the northern five counties. And then, we operate three outreach centers. We've expanded our operation in Sandpoint, and we believe that that represents a growth strategy as well for the college. We've been asked to expand our Professional Technical operations to outreach centers, two in particular, and both of those locations have offered facilities that we can use virtually at no cost to provide Professional Technical facility, or Professional Technical Programs to those outreach areas. And our Dean for Technical Education, Mike Myers, along with Cassie Silva, our Director of Outreach, is looking at those opportunities. And then, lastly, we need to continue to support our plumber area, which is, represents the Coeur d'Alene Tribe, and we provide business classes as well as welding courses to that area. So, what does this mean in terms of the future for us? Well, the Educational Master Plan is the first step in developing a more comprehensive planning process for this institution. In particular, we do not have a facilities master plan that looks at the future of our higher education campus or the facilities on campus. And these comments will be reflected as part of what the accreditation team found while they were here, and I'll provide that to you later. The website indicated, at the bottom of this slide, will take you to this Educational Master Plan that is fairly comprehensive, and there are new enrollment statistics that will be updated probably tomorrow in here. So, this is an active document. It's not something that is going to sit on the shelf and not be updated as time goes on. So, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report on the Educational Master Plan and an introduction to what it is about.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any questions or comments?
Question. Mr. Dunlap, as you look at the head count that you see is dropped by 5.5%, 7.5% in the academic arena, do you think this is a trend, or do you think this is due to the strengthening of the economy? What do you give that overview for?
Yeah. Traditionally, enrollment in higher education is inversely proportional to what is happening in the economy. And what I see happening, and I think what others see happening, is that there has been a little bit of an uptick in the economy. We are seeing some people going back to work. We're seeing a little bit of an uptick in the housing industry. And so, I think this is indicative of what is happening with our economy. Now, this does not necessarily represent what's happening in Professional Technical Education with us because we have a backlog of students. And so, we have more students to fill the seats than we can provide instruction to. So, you would naturally see the decline maybe more prevalent in those transfer courses and general studies classes.
Run.
Just additional observation, as you pointed that out, is that I'm looking at your last year total applications for Professional Technical, and you enrolled, you were able to enroll 148. We had 803 applications. Do you believe all 803 of these applications would have been a student in the seat had we had this facilities built and ready to go?
Well, I don't know that all 800 would, but certainly the vast majority of them would. I mean, we have students that are looking for those opportunities, and those students aren't going to wait a year or two or three years down the road. If they don't get their educational expectations met, they will look to other opportunities, whether it's a for-profit institution or maybe a different type of program. whether it's a for-profit institution or maybe a different type of program. And, yeah, excuse me, I'll leave it at that, I think.
I thought you were going to throw something.
No, 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 no.
I was ducking.
Thanks.
Any, any other, did you conclude your comments? I'm sorry.
I did. I was just throwing the mouse around here.
Any other questions or comments, excuse me, for President Dunlap? Thank you. This is a report. I don't know that it requires any action, and even if it did, this would be a first reading, but I think it's suggested that with regard to the, some of the other issues that we have on the agenda, the professional technical, and even the recreational facilities, that people refer to this education plan as part of the analysis process that needs to go on, so.
Right. Yes, and this is informational and does not require any action, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ron?
I, I guess this is some ways into where we're going, is I think that, that a lot of times, the debate that takes place is, are we going to do it or not going to do it? I think in the, in the case of, of supporting expansion of our professional technical campus is a, is a great debate, because all we're debating over, not if we're going to do it, it's where we're going to put it.
Right.
And so, when you look at what the opportunities are for this community, if we fulfill what you say is your number-one goal and mission to do, which is to increase the opportunity for the, the students here in North Idaho, I think this is an excellent position to be in, especially in light of the fact that we have a seven point five percent reduction on the academic side, that we have someplace to fill. Maybe it's only a two-year improvement in the economy, and we go back down and, and let's hope that doesn't help us, I mean, it doesn't happen, but if this does, we're in a position to cover both segues.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, well, I think there's one other consideration, Mr. Nielsen, how are we going to pay for it? And when are we going to be able to build it? So, yes, we all, we all recognize it's our number-one issue, but we have a long way to go, and these kind of studies certainly help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I think this provides a good segue to your next topic, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it does. Our next item on the agenda is a review of the report on the Professional and Technical Education Programming Report by Lori and Robert Urick from RGU Architecture. Take it away, folks.
While Lori pulls this up, I want to thank you, Mr. Chair, and the rest of the board and President, for having us here tonight to give a summary on the conclusions. I think we last met early December, and we were in the middle of getting all our findings and programming and stuff done for this research. We want to thank the community, the college, the faculty and students for all their support and input. We put a lot of them through a lot of grueling studies and surveys and researches, trying to get all the information we could to give you the best thorough thing in this survey. First of all, this is just a little synopsis of what we're going to go over tonight, who we are. I know tonight, we're speaking to some new people, and so I just wanted to give a little meaning about who we are and what we do, what we were hired to do for the college, the methods that we used, and then the findings. Okay? RGUA, RGU, that's Lori and myself and a bunch of other hard-working people. We're an architectural and planning firm, and ninety-five percent of the projects we do are in higher education. That's all we do. As you can see, we have quite a resume of some of the colleges, universities that we've worked at. Of that, of those projects, sixty percent of them are, are on the professional technical education side, and a large variety of those. And then we do a lot of campus master planning. On the professional tech side, we believe in getting it right. We have a large background that know, not only when we do one of our own projects, we go and look at existing projects and recently constructed projects, because you can learn a lot from what your competition's done and what people have, people that have been in a facility for a year, five years, can give you a lot of answers and conclusions, that's what's worked for them and what's changed. We like to have a very thorough background of what is working and what is not. Another important thing in the campus mastering planning side that has to do professional technical education is, a lot of times campuses, when they look at professional technical education citing on campus, don't realize the mass amount of space that these programs take and that they do need to adapt and change in the future. And, sorry to say, like, with Headland on campus here, when that building was done some forty years ago, there was really no way to expand that facility, and so you're in the dilemma that you are today. Basic overall of what we were hired to do was to look at the short and long-term solutions for your professional tech programs. To do that, we needed to look at the program needs, what current needs are, what future needs, and what's going on in Cootney County and the rest of the counties around that are associated with NIC. And also, to look at potential sites, and we'll get to that. Lori's going to talk a little bit about the methodology that we used in gathering all this information.
One of the things that we were charged with doing is to approach this entire project objectively. And to do that, what we knew we needed was we needed multiple perspectives. So we needed to hit the students. We needed to hit the instructors. We needed to hit the business and industries. We needed to hit the K through twelve. We needed to hit what is higher education doing. We needed to hit it across the board evenly and put all that input into one document. So what we did was, we had a few focus groups with different people, mainly the instructors. We focused on, on what they were needing. We met with the board once and had a goal, objective meeting, whereas, what's the goals for this project? What is it we're trying to accomplish? And then, we set out and we interviewed some key players in business and industry and K through twelve, and with the economic development agencies. And from them, we just gathered information. During the meeting, it was the kickoff meeting for the project that we met with the board. We came up with a bunch of goals for this project, and the different things that were flying around the room was, everybody wanted to provide seamless integration between K-Tech and higher education, and PTE and higher education, all the way through. We want everyone to be able to accomplish what they want to accomplish, to be able to, after a year, they're done, they're done. After two years, they're done, they're done. But to constantly, everybody lifelong, learning opportunities, be able to continually increase their education in a progressive basis, and that was one of the goals. Quality education, student-centered. Everybody recognized that the student was number one, and everything needed to be based off of the student needs. The facilities, there was a lot of discussion about the facilities being flexible and adaptable and being able to meet the needs of the future with minimal upgrades. The other one was that the pro, that the facilities were designed to meet the needs of the programs, that they were program-specific. A welding lab wasn't designed, wasn't fit in somewhere, that it was actually designed to fit the needs of that welding lab. Being cost-efficient was important. Using the community resources was important. Building facilities that are going to endure was important. Another thing that was brought up was Headland. Okay, we're going to build a new professional technical education center. What are we going to do with Headland? How can we maximize the use of that? That was a goal. Lifecycle costs, we covered that. And then maximizing partnerships. One of the things the board wanted to do was to be able to build relationships with K through twelve, with higher education, with business and industry, and also the community. How can we build this facility so that it can offer lifelong learning courses? If somebody wants to learn woodworking, can they come into this facility and take a class? If somebody wants to learn welding, can they come into this facility? And then, integrating e-learning and hybrid learning, working with the outlying districts. How can we make this facility work for that? And then, the last thing was sustainability, being a sustainable facility. Okay. And then, interviewing, in our interviews, here are the statements that I heard, and I heard it from a lot of these, from more than one source. One was eliminating the long waiting lists. There was a lot of frustration with that. Number two was that they felt that the counselors were detouring the students from PTE because they couldn't get them in, and making them go into academics, and then from academics, they went on to four-year degrees, and they were losing them as part of what the student originally came to the college for. Another comment I got was, teach commercial construction. Another one I got was, not everyone needs two-year degrees. Let's do some short-term programs. Number five, the community expects the college to build a PT facility on K-Tech site. Number six was, I want to capture these kids, get them interested in staying in school. That came from one of the local superintendents. More internship opportunities would be beneficial. That came from students, that came from instructors, and that came from business and industry. Everybody wanted to build on that. One company told me that they are hiring employees from outside the area, and that they really need an employee base of students that are coming out of NIC who can critically think, problem-solve. So, from there, we did some surveys, and we sent some surveys out to industry, and from that, we, what you see right here, and, and the report will be online, I believe, so everybody will be able to see it better, but what you see on those first two that stretch way over is that there was a lot of emphasis on, they need writing and math skills. The next one that you see down below is, and it kind of surprised me, is blueprint and CAD skills. They really want, whether they're a machinist, whether they're a welder, they really want them to have those skills. Soft skills. There was a lot of concern about students coming out of the school, being able to work as a team, work independently, creatively think, and again, you'll be able to see these a little bit closer if you look at the study. Okay. The student survey. We surveyed the students that are in the current PTE students, and there's a lot of shocking information that came out of this. One was, I typically think of the professional technical education students as being a little bit older, and when you look at this, forty-five percent are under the age of twenty-four. That, that surprised me, but I think it's really important to know that. Seventy-four percent were there because they want a job. They want the skills to get a job, and that really surprised me. Go ahead and go to the other one. Okay. This one. I was thinking a lot of the professional technical education students were working, and in reality, thirty-nine percent of them are, are not working, and then another fifteen percent are only working one to ten hours a week. But, if you look on the other question that I asked was, are they involved in extracurricular activities with NIC? And how many hours are they spending in that? And if you look at that, five or less, thirty-two percent. Six to ten hours a week in extracurricular activities, twenty-five percent said yes to that. Eleven to fifteen, twenty-two percent said yes to that. So what it shows was the professional technical education students were involved in extracurricular activities involving NIC. Whether those are occurring on campus or off of campus, if I could do the survey over again, I probably would ask that question, because that is what came out of that. This is another thing that I asked the students, and, and what I was trying to get from this was, are they engaging in, are they engaging in discussions and activities that are typical of a college student? And this, you'll be able to look at better online, but current events, twenty-nine percent of them said, yeah, we're talking about current events in class. And you have a negative number, because the way I scored this, and everything can be manipulated the way it scored, I know, but the way I scored this was a negative one if they said, I never think about that, zero if that's neutral, one if that's, yeah, I routinely do that, I do that all the time. So that's where you're getting the negatives, and I didn't put what program these were in, but I did, I, I, I can give that information. And there is definite variances between the different PTE programs on how they answered it, what type of discussions, are they engaging in outside-of-class group discussions, stuff like that. But what I've found across the board was, yeah, they are. They are behaving very typically to what I've seen, and I've done master plans for most of the regional community colleges around here, and they're behaving very typically to what I'm seeing, both in PTE and transfer students at other colleges. Okay, here was the question, where should we be located? Will it affect you where it's located? Fifty-four percent said, where this facility is located, yes, it's going to affect them. And where should it be placed? What they said was, the new education corridor, forty-three percent thought that was a good location, and this adds to more than one hundred, because they checked a couple boxes, and so, that's why you're getting that discrepancy. On campus, next to Headland, thirty-two percent. Next to workforce training, nine percent. Next to K-Tech and Rattam, seven percent, and does not matter, nineteen percent. Okay. This was another thing that I did, is I had the college's Department of Institutional Research run me the numbers on student follow-ups. They do a follow-up. Generally, I think they do it every year, but all they had was two thousand and ten available, and this is off of the number of graduates from those programs. How many of those students are continuing their educa, education after they graduate? And this, I, I found astonishing. Automotive, thirty-eight percent of the graduates from that program are continuing education. They are not re-entering the workforce, and you can see rest of the numbers. They're pretty high. Across the board, it ends up thirty-eight percent of your PTE students are continuing in education. Why that is, it is an unknown.
So as part of the study, you'll see, and it's hard to explain, but it's all in the manual, so I'm just going to give a summary. We met with the faculty and students to look at the, the current spaces and the square footages that they're using. We looked at the program needs, we looked at the waiting list, we looked at everything that needed to be required, and we came up with immediate needs for programs right now. And that's what you see right now, is here on, is just a summary of what is currently needed in those programs. So, like on the earlier meeting in December, we were just concluding the programming efforts, and so, we've just brought some slides for the people that don't have the book. You can kind of see the programming for the different labs. And then, as part of this, we looked at fifteen, twenty years ahead, meeting your enrollment needs, waiting list, what that's going to be, what industry is looking at for hires, what those square footages need to be in twenty years. So as we get further down in this study, you'll see that we've, with our findings, we've tried to develop a, a plan for you to basically use, that you could create a facility, that you could expand onto these labs as, as needed, like explained, Headland doesn't provide that opportunity, but it would be nice to have a facility that did. Part of the short-term solutions for non-house programs, we looked at first, and I believe, as I've heard now, that ORPV does have a home, but at the time, we were doing the study, they did not. So we came up with some cost for relocating those programs, and based a short-term, immediate needs for those programs, and the cheapest for welding that we could see is if you can continue that lease until you make a decision on a professional tech program, that's your best, if you can keep that space. I know they want it, but it'd be nice, and that's the cheapest for you. The next cheapest space was, with all the tenant improvements that you'd have to put in a short-term lease, was a little over one and a half million dollars. And I'll get into this a little bit when we get into the programming side. These programs are very specialized, and so, a short-term solution really is not advisable, even if, if you do chose to go that way, because that's all that you have. It's very expensive to set those up. It's not like you throw up four walls, walk in and use the space. There's very elaborate power needs, exhaust needs, errors, power, everything that needs to be put in these spaces to be able to teach those facilities. When we looked at the short-term options, there was nothing available at the conclusion of our study that you could house all of your programs in one location. At the end of this study, I'll get in, there was a spot that has come up, open at the first of the year, and so I did do a supplement that I think that you got, that you could lease this facility and move all your professional tech programs into. Again, on the short-term, we also looked at the housed programs, and relocating those for three years. Again, the infrastructure cost is, is exceptionally high, and it was a little over seven million dollars with the lease, and setting them up. If you're looking at a lease- If you're looking at a lease option, the one at the end would be best because the longer that you're leasing the space for the tenant improvements that you're putting in up front is going to have better, better payback. But in the short-term, relocating these labs is, is not a cost-effective solution. In the long-term solution, um, we looked at meeting with instructors and the programs that we had, um, developing a scheme to build one large professional technical education fil- facility. That number was fairly phenomenal. I think the one, um, that we had heard earlier in the study was, um, five years ago was about forty-five million dollars. Now, for the same, you're talking about sixty million dollars to do one facility in a long-term solution. We looked at several ca- I'll get into the site a little bit later, but we did look at the locations that were possible on campus, um, to utilize that, workforce training, and then adjacent to K-Tech.
Covered all this already?
So our, with our findings, and the financial situation you face with, um, funding this facility, our suggestion is to leave the current programs running on campus as you can afford to build a new facility for them. And as part of this, we've conceptualized a phase plan. First plan would be to house the unhoused programs that you currently have, which is welding and ORPV, and bring them on campus. This was about nine million dollars. This building would be adaptable, and as if you went on to the next phase, which is about eleven million dollars, would add the rest of machining, carpentry, uh, maintenance millwright, and other, um, programs except for automotive, diesel, and collision. Phase three would be to build a diesel, automotive, and collision lab adjacent to the existing, or the phase one and phase two building. Under site considerations, we looked at all three sites. Um, there is a cost analysis breakdown for all three sites. In the long terms, selecting a site is truly on the board. Um, all the findings we did is just research to help you further make that decision by all the student surveys, industry, um, impacts of, um, if you relocate off-campus, that they're going to have on additional costs that the college would incur, um, the benefits of being off-campus, all of those findings are in there. So when we looked at site considerations, we wanted to revisit, be- excuse me, hit some water. Revisit the project goal and objectives. Again, the number-one goal and objective that we got from the board was to further education, basically, like Lori said, from the kids coming out of the high school. And that would be specifically with the K-Tech facility out on the Ratham site. The site matrix, how that's going to work with the rest of the programs. Student surveys, lessons learned. In the process of doing this study, we went down and visited the College of Western Idaho, which is a newer facility in the Napa area, and looked at their facility because it is located, um, off of their old campus, but they really didn't have a campus. They were just temporarily housed at BSU. At the time of the report, because K-Tech has just come online, we really do not have a true number of how many of those students leaving K-Tech are going to transfer onto NIC programs. But at College of Western Idaho, five percent of the kids, only five percent of the kids from the, um, Skill Center down there were going on to the College of Western Idaho. Lori went over that, that per your two thousand and ten graduates continuing education from these programs are thirty-eight percent of kids are going on to, um, further their education. What impacts would be of duplicating of student services that are already provided on campus, accreditation standards, which are federal and state laws, student impacts, we've heard some nice information early today from tonight, and instructor impact, and then the financial impact. Um, we prepared a site matrix, which is also in the thing, and that, that's another just tool for the board to use. Under certain criteria, certain sites score better. If you look at the scoring, it, it all depends on what you're looking for in citing the facility.
Some of the information we wanted to make sure everyone understood was where its sites does impact the student, and it inspe- impacts your staff as well. And so we just put and listed a few of the student impacts. If it's located, where it's located is going to impact, um, the access that the students have, um, to all of these things that I listed. And that will be available to you guys, too. It's going to also, the faculty will be impacted. It's going to impact their ability to meet meetings and to be part of different groups that are happening on campus. And accreditation, um, one of the things I did was I called the accreditation department and had a conversation with them and asked them, wh- what needs to be done? I- if this is located off of campus, what all needs to be duplicated? And their reply was pretty much everything. The students that are on one campus must have access to the same things as they have on the main campus. And I said, does that go as far as daycare and that kind of stuff? And they said, well, they have to make sure that they have reasonable access to that. And so whether it has to be duplicated or not, i- it's going to be something that, um, the college needs to dig deep in and have a plan of attack for everything. At all the services that you have, you have to have a plan of attack of how you're meeting that. Can it be done? It, it can be done. Is it going to be extensive and expensive and split your resources? Yes. And those are the things that you need to be aware of. And these are just some conceptual renderings. They're things, um, that were done based off of our, uh, phase concept and, um, just basically, just some ideas. Um, they're, they're nothing written in stone. They're just places where you can go. We've been involved in several PTE, um, facilities, and they're just similar. They, they are unique, and they are yours.
So in the study based, this, these conceptions are based on the phase plan, and if, if you look in the study, anticipation for construction type, which is similar to Northwest Idaho that you see a lot around Coeur d'Alene, is tilt-up construction, um, with some nicer brick veneer on classroom and support spaces. When you look in the report, um, because I wanted to understand the tenant improvement cost versus the shell cost, I broke down the pricing on the shell versus the tenant improvement, so you can see the impact of setting up these labs, what the cost actually is. And so I believe that in the study for the shell cost, they only have eighty-two dollars a square foot for the shell, but some of the labs, I think la- welding was the most expensive, there's a hundred and seventy dollars a square foot to initially set that space up to be functional for education.
And one of the things I'd like to point out is that on campus, if you choose to build a new facility, more than likely, you're going to have two or three facilities. Um, if it is built off-site, whether it's at workforce training or on the K-Tech, you would have the option of building one facility. And so we did a, a conceptual on that. Um, but I do not believe that that is possible to accomplish on campus. It's, it's too big of a facility, and there isn't a footprint available.
This one's conceptionally, if you were to build on the K-Techs or adjacent to K-Tech. So, towards the end of the, um, our study, and we turned that in, um, it was approached, and in our scans through the realtors and local community, we couldn't find any leasable space that could house, um, all of your professional tech programs for a long-term lease option. The Jacqueline Seed property, um, adjacent to the new, uh, Overpass exit, um, out by Post Falls has become available. Um, I've worked with Jacqueline Seed, and they gave us a kind of a rundown, um, of leasing the space, and we put together a cost estimate there for tenant improvements. We asked in the preparation of this lease with them, in the long-term solution, that there would be some buyout at the end, and they have agreed to a buyout in, I believe, seven to ten years, and they've given us a dollar amount for that. So that would be some consideration, um, of a lease option purchase. I think if you went the lease route, this would be the best advisable solution because you will own it in the end, and all the improvements that you put in will not go to waste to somebody else down the road. So, I'll just go quickly because, um, in the report, I try to be precise, and so if somebody doesn't understand that, um, I know that the site is a huge consideration here. So in our report, we priced out all the sites and what those would cost to do a new facility based on campus, workforce training, and the Ratham site. Um, if you look in the study, there are some initial costs for the Ratham site and workforce training, just because you need to set up the student's support services. Once those are established, then the cost versus building on the campus are primarily the same. The cost of building on the Ratham site, Dale had went out and met with them, and so the cost impacts of the first initial development cost were based on his discussion with them and our engineer working out the cost for those. I think that was a little over a million dollars just initially to develop that site. Where that would be, or if they would work through that or no, I mean, I've heard some stuff earlier tonight, so that, that mon- that number might be lower. But we'd like to open it for any discussion or questions.
Any questions or discussions from the board? Run.
Now, seven-thirty, uh, maybe we should take a break for ten minutes, and then we'll go for an hour on this because I've got some real, um, heartburn over some of the way this was presented. And, uh, as I look at your statistics that you're using for a lot of this, you talk about students taking these courses, seventy-four percent of these say they wanted to get a job. Let me finish.
No, 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 did you want to take a break first, or?
No, I'm, I was kidding because that, uh, I think this is pretty important stuff, so I want to get through there. So, um, I thought you were going to tell me I couldn't ask a question. I'm, I'm awake now. That seventy-four percent of the students' goal was to take these courses, I, I understood was to get a job. I thought that was most, all the students' purposes of getting continued education, especially in the professional technical field. And when, as I go through, I, I, you were kind enough to share with me all of your surveys that were generated, and I broke up into two groups. Took the eleven companies that were surveyed that had, um, anywhere between, uh, five employees or less. And part of the survey asked the question is, how many employees will you employ in the next twelve months? It was less than one per, there, I think it was like point-five, point-six employees. The next group, which was a larger, uh, companies that were well represented, which is, it had a total of eleven companies, and these eleven companies, um, had a request in, um, for a total of eighty-one jobs, a little bit higher interest level. But what was interesting is a tremendous void of some of our major employers here. I took the liberty of calling our four largest employers that did not, were not represented in the survey, and out of these four companies, I called, darn, there's eighty-five jobs that they're planning on next year. So I, I'm always scared when we get an incomplete report, at least that we don't have the major employers represented here. And as I review your scoring system that talks about, um, if, a scoring system that, I don't know who came up with the scoring system, but where it says helps define the education corridor, and you rate this as the ultimate for where we're presently at, and then these off-site facilities as it, it does not help at all, and so you derate K-Tech, you derate Riverbend, and you give all this credit to here. When I look at it, it says, the community was told that this education corridor was for continued four-year institution. The community expects to see Boise State, University I, Lewis and Clark State College to come on here. So when you say helps define the education corridor to build this site on here, I don't think helps define the education corridor because we call the education corridor maybe something different. Second of all, is when you talk about duplications of services, I had the opportunity to talk to some of the staff here and talk about if we're moving potentially eight hundred students, maybe not everybody from the PTE will go out there, but some of the off- currently we serve, um, what's the number today, the number of students that we serve in the welding side? We service, you know, twenty-eight students in welding, we, we service in the, uh, outdoor power and recreation. We service these students without having them here. They're getting the skills that they need to get a job. So when you say we have to duplicate services, we're doing that today, they come on campus. If we built a major campus out on K-Tech, we have the opportunity to staff that with the appropriate number of people, and if we grow that side of the business which we're talking about, I don't think we're duplicating. I think there's so many counselors, so many things that are needed per student. So when I look at this cor- scoring system on here, all I can do is look at that scoring system and say, that, I have no idea where that is because when I score it based on your scoring system, it justifies more of the K-Tech property. But you've managed to score this down to where it's the worst scoring system, and I have no idea where the scoring system comes. Today, we talked about, we have eight hundred and three, uh, openings within our PTE, and we currently have a hundred and forty-eight. We need to find a way to do that a- as soon as possible. We, as a board, all of us went to all of the, uh, PTE classes in the last week. Visit them, talk to the teachers, what can we do? And not, the feedback from them is not well-represented in this report. So I'm a little bit, uh, worried, Robert, is if we use this as, as a roadmap, we're going to end up maybe someplace we don't want to be. So I guess I would ask is, the scoring system, to me, which is a summary, who set the standard and the scoring system, and who put the numbers in?
All right, Mr. Trustee, you bombarded me with, I think, about fifteen questions, so I'll try.
Start with who did the scoring matrix and who did the scoring?
The scoring was a conglomination of us and people on the campus, um, scoring the sites which would we- best well-benefit education. And so, when you look at the criteria, eh, you can understand that the K-Tech site and workforce training site are going to score better in certain scenarios. But the fact that the, the campus is always going to score higher is because most of the survey is based on existing conditions and opportunities and student support, which is already located on the main campus. So when you look at the scoring matrix for a site, any site that already houses, already all those conditions is going to score higher than a satellite campus site. On your question on the surveys, I can't remember, but we mailed out over a hundred surveys. We would call them once to twice a week to try to get as many people to fill them out as possible. We're sorry that not everybody turned in a survey. They were out there for six weeks. We called a lot, reminded them to do it. Some people just neglected to turn them in, and I apologize for that, but I could not force that to happen. So our basis for our summary on industry is on the ones that were kind enough to turn them in, so we had something to compare to.
And we gathered that list from the Chamber of Commerce. Um, we took a comprehensive list of all of the Chamber of Commerce, um, that were in those PTE categories, and first, we called them, and we informed them that the survey was coming. And then, when we asked them, what's the best way to give it to you? Can I get your email address? Do you want me to mail? Do you want me to fax it? How do you want me to deliver it to you? And most of them said, hey, here's my email address, here's my fax address. Um, and we left that for about a week, and we asked them to either email it back to us or fax it to us. And then we called them again. And some of them are like, oh, I don't have that, this person quit, this person quit, you know, stuff like that we received after the month. But we did call and contact them two or three times each. And of the list, we had, it was actually fifty, it was about fifty. And we have over a fifty percent response rate, and that's pretty good for a survey. I, I do surveys all the time and stuff, and fifty percent response rate i- is fairly good response rate. I, I understand, um, your frustration about, about this company employs eighty-five people, and this one employs two. But we're North Idaho, and we have a bunch of small businesses, and a bunch of small businesses starting off, a- and everybody has equal input. Everybody needs the same skill sets to advance. And so I think the input, whether they're a small company or a large company, it's, it's the same. Everybody's struggling to grow.
Then on, uh, meeting with the faculty, all of the programming is based on meeting with the faculty. We met, met with the faculty four or five times. We came up with different scenarios for their labs, making sure we met all their needs. We took the faculty on a couple different tours to look at other facilities because a lot of them hadn't seen what else is going on. And a lot of the faculty might be mad at me because I might have took some of the sco- And a lot of the faculty might be mad at me because I might have took some of the square footage that they currently have, only think that's only one lab, but that they don't need to house the enrollment that they have and the projected enrollment that they have. So we have met with all the faculty, and we have met all their conditions. I forgot the other question now.
Well, I can appreciate that people don't respond to an email that was sent to them asking them to fill out a survey or something that came in the mail, but the HR directors of these four largest companies never heard of this survey. And I'm, so I said, "Would you take the time to go through this with me?" They were happy to share this with their, some of the questions they thought were not relevant to what we're talking about. But these four were that quick because they're waiting with bated breath to have an opportunity to tell this institution what they need as far as a skilled and trained workforce and continued education. But if we leave out our four largest companies here, Kimball is our largest manufacturing company here, they have an excess of 350 employees, and when you take a company like this that are, they're hiring people today, we need to know that, we need to know their input. And if we don't get to them, then I suggest we go see them, call them, talk to them like I did.
We tried and we gave a list of everybody, we provided. A lot of what I went by on what you need was the list that you talked about earlier, how many students are on the waiting list. So the labs are based on that waiting list, which is also based at the input that we got from industry and then multiplied by what the ones that didn't return summary on. The labs that we have designed and that we have programmed are designed to take care of that waiting list. A lot of the structuring is the programs and how the curriculum is ran within those labs to take care of those programs. The needs for industry and all the things that we've talked about here, I mean, I don't think are the hot topic, because the hot topic is where are you going to put it? Because meeting industry needs and taking care of enrollment, I can take care of that on the main campus or the other two campuses, so that's really not an argument where, on the siding issue.
Well, when we're looking at this-
Excuse me, some other folks have some questions.
Yeah, let me just finish with it. When you are looking at applications, you've got to assume that if these application waitlists, and we talked to about four of the instructors that had this situation, students have stopped coming in. They don't do that. They go to Spokane and get their education, they go on and do this. So, I think that we have to know what the demand is, not on our waitlist, because some of these waitlists are so stretched out, people stop applying. So we have to be very careful that we include all the major businesses that are in these skill sets. When we have 100% placements in a number of these, the more we build, the more students that we graduate to get jobs, so.
Excuse me, I would like to get somebody else a chance to get in here. Todd?
No, go right, no, you had your hand up. I didn't see it.
Well, I guess I'm going to partly be continuing a theme a little bit, as I've reviewed the document, and one of the things that did catch my attention was the matrix that you utilized. And I guess a couple observations, and then maybe if you want to speak to it, but I want to understand something. When we look at this matrix and you've assigned the numerical values, the highest that you can get is a nine, correct? And the lowest is a zero. So nine is good, zero is bad.
10 is the highest, and nothing is ultimately probably a 10.
I was going to say, I didn't see any 10s, so I didn't know what your scale was. And I was trying to make sense of the prioritization of the six sites that we have referenced here, the four campus sites, Riverbend and K-Tech. And I guess when I looked at them, like under site impacts, for example, I'm just going to give you a few things that jumped out at me. It says requires demolition of existing facilities. And it goes 6, 7, 7, 4, 6, and 6 at K-Tech. And I'm not as familiar with the Riverbend site, so I don't know what you're going to be demolishing, but if K-Tech's a blank piece of ground, that would be a nine, I would think. I don't think we're demolishing anything. And then when I look up at about in the middle of that, I see, "Will increase parking congestion." And on campus, I see 6, 6, 6, 6, 6 at Riverbend, again, I'm not sure I have a good feel for that, and then 6 at K-Tech. For parking congestion, if I've got 40 acres, I think I've got adequate parking. And then I'm looking up above and say sustainability, and it says enjoys desirable views. That is a rather subjective criteria there, so I'm not sure I understand that. And I see 6, 8, 8, 8, 6, 7. Again, maybe matter of taste, my wife would tell you that the prairie's the most beautiful because you go around and see all the mountains. So I don't know, I see some things that I'm, I'm not sure how you're quantifying them, I guess, they seem rather subjective and it may be a little irrelevant to the teaching environment of education. Again, desirable views, I don't know how important that is. And then, again, there's several of these that just intuitively don't make sense to me, you know? I mean, I'm not demolishing anything on bare ground, I'm not increasing parking congestion. I look at one under sustainability, it says redevelops previously used land, not virgin ground. Well, the top one is a sustainable site. Now, that's important. The bottom one, do I really, how much emphasis do I want to put on whether I'm redeveloping ground or using virgin ground? And on that one, for example, Riverbend got a 2 and K-Tech got a 0, so they were scored quite low, just because we happen to be turning new dirt. Again, if it was urban blight and we were going in somewhere and trying to do something that way, maybe I could see where you would make a distinction of redevelopment versus, you know, virgin ground. But for our site, I guess I'm not sure I really see, you know, how important that is, I guess. So, I guess one of my concerns, you know, Ron phrased it a little differently, you know, using this as the roadmap, and we may end up not where we want to go. And I'm not trying to accuse anybody of bias here or whatever, but I guess I'm questioning just some of the questions we're asking and then their relevance, and then making sure that they make sense intuitively with the scoring system that you've applied.
If I'm understanding right, because the scoring system is to receive the highest number, so with the demolition number, say for the K-Tech site, there is some demolition with digging up the ground and revising, but it is a higher number because it is undeveloped site. So it would get a 6 or a 7.
Well, that's the same score, oh, I'm sorry. Some scores on site.
On site, you basically have a high number because you've already put in the education roadway and established those building sites. So most of the demolition and all of that's already been done, to already developed those sites. That hasn't been done at the K-Tech site, it is a bare site. So it doesn't score as high in the criteria of that it's already been somewhat developed. On the soils condition, boy, with the green and sustainability, it just, just from my standpoint on scoring farmland, even though it has been zoned for that, it still is a strike because you're developing land that has primarily been agricultural into an urban setting where all the land on the campus has already been stated that for a long time. So, the K-Tech site would not get any points, because even though it has been stated that way, it hasn't been developed and it has the potential to stay agricultural land or to be used by the college for agricultural programs.
Christie?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Well, first, I want to thank you for a very, very large task that you've completed. And please don't mistake some of our frustration for lack of understanding of how large this project was. You're kind of in a position where you're the bearer of bad news, because we look at the numbers it's going to take to construct a facility and budget-wise, and it is very frustrating for us. We would love to start tomorrow. So, I just want you to understand that we're very grateful for all the work you have put forth, and we're just going to go through it so we understand it. With that, I guess I'd like you to speak to, when you started out, you talked about how you were given certain guidelines, and I think Mr. Nielsen's comment that this was a roadmap, I think, I'm hoping that we all understand, and maybe you can speak to this, that this is just a compilation of information.
Correct.
We will all decide whether, if it's more money to go to K-Tech, if that's the direction we want to go, that's what we'll do. If we think long run, that's the best way to go. And so, I guess I just want you to speak to that, that this isn't a roadmap, this is just a large number of facts that you've pulled together for us.
Yes, basically, I thank you, because that's what it is, and truly, in the end, the decision. And the decision that seems to be the biggest one is where to site the facility, and that's truly on you. And yes, this is just the best of us putting together all the information that we have gathered for you to make an educated decision, not to tell you what to do, but for you to make a decision. Working on a bunch of different campuses and policies and stuff, and I know NIC has their own, but we've been through this on a lot of other things, and so we're my, by no means experts, but we are very experienced in what you're going through here to try to make these decisions, and it's a very hard task. Most importantly, that I hope that you take is just the findings that we have of what you need in the building, what the size of the building needs to be. And the costs that we've calculated in that building by the shell, which is maybe a little bit more because I have $82 a square foot, you could get by with a metal building probably for about 45 to 50, but the lifecycle cost of a metal building is potentially 20 years. They just, the metal starts getting loose, they leak, and then you have major maintenance that you have to imply after 20 years. The facility that I costed out there at the $82 a square foot remodel is a 50-year shell. So that would be a low maintenance facility, good acoustics. I don't know if you went to the College of Western Idaho when they've been up and running, but it's very loud and they have a lot of acoustics and other issues that we talked with Will Fanning, and they're spending lots of money to try to fix those errors that they didn't do in the designing end.
Thank you.
Judy?
A couple of thoughts, thank you. In listening to your report about having visited other campuses, I'm hoping, Mr. Chair, we can explore that too, and certainly, College of Western Idaho fits within our Boise trips. At some point, we can do that. The other one, I think I saw on your list, geographically nearby, where you've done some, and walk us through what you've done with those, was Columbia Basin?
Correct, that's the latest one.
Which is probably the next closest one. Did you do anything in Spokane?
Nope, that's pretty much a tight market for all the Spokane firms. We primarily cover all of lower eastern Washington, from Walla Walla Community College up to Big Bend. We're currently having the planning to do a new professional tech building at Big Bend Community College. We completed the one at CBC. The one at CBC is right front door as you drive in their campus.
Would you give us the name of the college rather than initials?
It's Columbia Basin College, sorry.
That's helpful.
It's the front of the campus. It's amazing, you take the people through the front end of that building, and I'm a lover of professional tech, and they go there and they think it's this great research thing, and they walk through the door and they see the technical education labs, and they say, "I wouldn't even known this was here." A lot of people that had a chance to be in that facility that opted out because they're very prestigious and didn't want to be associated with the technical ed kids, which is one of the stigmas we'd like to take away, because they're people just like everybody else and they shouldn't be shunned and put somewhere else on campus. Their goal was to integrate those students with the rest of the campus, because they're people too, and not be shunned. And a lot of those kids don't develop socially and stuff because they are isolated in those programs. The thought process behind that facility and the other ones we have planning is, as you all know, on campus, that classrooms are very rare, are in low quantity sometimes, especially in the morning, and you don't have enough classrooms, well, you build a professional tech center. Those classrooms might get used two to four hours a day, the other four hours a day, they can be used for general things, so it's a benefit to the college to also use those classrooms for other needs.
Ron?
Back to what Mr. Tippett and Mr. Boyer says, is we have an MOU. Let's start with just a clean sheet of paper. This MOU says that they support where it is. You know how we ended up there was because NIC chose that property. They committed to that 151 acres, and the reason that they did that was is they don't just service here, they service a whole, is it five counties? Five counties. So when you start looking about where we're driving, all the way from possibly from the valley to Kellogg to Sandpoint, that when they did that, they made the decision. We agreed with them, we came alongside them, bought that, and that's why we wanted to know where they were going, because we wanted to come alongside that. K-Tech is a success story. K-Tech has talked around all over the state and outside the state. K-Tech was an example of when you bring a community together, you bring industry together, you build it right the first time, and they will come. We built that institution for 288 students. 1,100 kids applied for those 288 positions, telling us the same story here, so if we build it, they will come. When you make, and industry came alongside, the industry donated money, industry's donated machinery, and as Christie has mentioned, cost is a real problem. We've got to get industry involved in this. If we don't, we alienate them, we're going to lose a huge resource for employing our students and coming alongside of us. You made an assumption in this costing study, it's going to cost exactly the same per square foot if we build it here or we build it on our site. We built K-Tech out there for almost less than half of what you're proposing in here, so you can't say that it's got to be the same cost, depending on where the location is. You can't make that assumption.
I'm making the assumption that the buildings would be the same versus wherever you build a campus. Like I said in the other question, a metal building's lifespan is about 20 years versus what we propose, which is a 50-year building, and that's the increase in cost, that's what I'm talking about in the shell costs that I have incorporated. I've walked through the K-Tech site, and it, looking at the welding facilities that we've done and the welding facilities you have and the welding facilities that are on the K-Tech site, the K-Tech site is not as far established, I feel that you need for higher education to instruct welding. The booths are all on one side, a little light on the area to be able to weld and run students through there. And so our costs are based on the higher education model currently that's been done in the last probably five or six years. Actually, the one that we just finished, which was three years ago, was $208 a square foot, which is a masonry building, high ventilation. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with LEED, which is a scoring system for greed buildings, and that was a gold building, and the highest you can get is platinum, and it's way above that. That building is very energy efficient, we did it very effectively and cost-effectively. One other buildings that we're building at the same time, we're going for 365 to 385 a square foot, and we did that for 208. So on my estimate to put in to build your facility, it is top-notch for instruction. Most of the money is, like I said, in there is for the infrastructure, for the instruction. There is not very much cost built into the shell.
Judy, you had a question?
Um, I had it, but let's stay on this train, I'll come back, thank you.
So, one of the proposals you're talking about is to temporarily move into River, out on Riverbend into the Jacklin seed property for, I hate to tell you, that that building's 30, 40 years old, so it's done for the last-
Can I just answer that one? Because that scenario was just done for you to give you an option for something that was big enough to lease, it was, only does as a supplemental.
But my point is, is when you give a life on a structure that says 20 years, that's not true. I can show you 100 businesses that are operating in businesses in metal, steel structure with metal siding that have insulation, that have all the sound criteria, heating, air conditioning, everything you need, it just doesn't have the brick that goes up to the top and something that would be appropriate, be built on the education corridor to go seamless with Meyer education building, it would look something similar to that. If we have 800 kids that go without skills every year, and we're going to build this something at $280 a square foot, and we can build something for $140 a square foot, we build twice as many square feet and we get these jobs filled today. Money's a problem.
I understand the money issue.
That's all right. Christie, you got a question?
Rod, I really think those arguments are best suited for the board, not for our consultant. He isn't going to make the decision, we are. And I want to ask you something. Are you, have you made up your mind that you want this to be located at K-Tech?
I don't think, I don't think they need to know all this stuff, but since you ask, no, let me answer a question. The answer to your question is, at this point, I see 500 graduates coming out of there. I see joint collaboration, as Robert pointed out, there's a lot of classrooms and there's a lot of technical space that sits idle other than three hours a day. We have a joint collaboration between an education institution like K-Tech, which is a success, they come alongside, and now we're sharing instruction, we're sharing classroom space, we're sharing, we're sharing. That's good use of tax dollars when we do that. So yes, if you show me another site that gives us the amount of square foot for the dollar, joint-use facilities, and an opportunity the way we have today, then I would be the first one to say, "I'd consider something else," but I haven't seen anybody that has said any different.
Okay, well, and I wasn't done with, that's fine, because you know that we're just gathering information. We have public forums coming forward, and we hope to get even more information. But I guess it's, we're not getting to go through a lot of this stuff because we're just, we're just kind of hammering on our consultant, and we're going to make the decision, not our consultant.
I guess, Christie, I share that, Mr. Chairman, I share that with you, we don't need to be arguing about this, but this becomes a computerized document that looks pretty impressive when you see the 350 pages with scoring systems, whatever. We've got to be really, as I said earlier on, we've got to be careful. If we're prepared to say this will be some- If we're prepared to say is we're, this will be something for a roadmap for us to consider and then we adjust accordingly and we get proper feedback from industry that's going to place most of these people and we add this on top of this and we see that there's some discrepancy between some of the information, I'm okay with that. But I hate when we're talking about putting this on our website and we hate to get, I hate to see us bring in a whole community support when this is the only document that we have today to start the discussion.
Are there any other questions of these people?
I, I'd like to ask a question.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Ron? I know the, the emphasis is really important to get this professional technical education facility because you need it really bad. Um on the emphasis of choosing the sites, um I'm curious on why K-Tech was chosen to only move these programs out here? And what would, what's the thought process behind putting those programs out there versus other established programs on campus and not moving those out to that site? What's the distinction between just welding and diesel going out there and not nursing and dental or some other programs?
You should go visit it sometime. They have uh three nursing classes, three semesters a day.
They do at K-Tech, but you, you're not asking the college to move their nursing program out to that site?
Oh, I, I think that the nursing facility we have here is incredible and does an unbelievable job. And we don't need to move everybody out there. We're looking for additional square footage. Where we choose to put the additional square footage, I don't think is going to be a compliment.
And just food for thought because we did a scan and, and we've, um with the colleges that we work at, those areas have skill centers that have been running. I know Tri-Cities has been running for over twenty years. It's a very successful skill center. But the campus doesn't locate anything by that skill center. They still run and have great integration into the college, but they're not located on the same campus. Um we did a search and of skill centers and college campuses combinations. It's very nice when the high school builds a skill center on the college campus, but we couldn't find any role models where they've done the opposite and the college is built on the high school campus. So that's just food for thought when you guys think through this.
But clarification, they're not, they're separate facilities. And today we have, as you probably went out and saw, our welding facility, our outdoor recreation, these are off-site facilities. And when we get twenty-eight graduates every year and we place a hundred percent placement and we do that off-site, it doesn't scare me to do it off-site.
But this, the welding and ORPV off, being off-campus is not by choice. It's just because you can't, if you could have housed them here, they would be on campus.
One college that-
Excuse me, yeah, Judy, did you?
Uh we want to finish that one up and then, yes, I have another question. Thank you.
Do you have, complete the answer there that you-
Sure.
Well, I just wanted to let Ron know, one of the colleges that we're working with right now doing a um trades and industry center, Green River Community College, um they had a lot of siding issues and it was very hard for them to find a way to put the trade and industry building on campus. They had, um I believe at a very low cost at the airport, they offered them some land to put it out there. But the college had a lot of these same struggles and they chose to keep it on campus. And, and the overriding factor was, is that the college didn't want trades and industries to feel like they were not important. They were part of the culture.
And so when you talk about the structure of industry and all these scenarios with this thing, you're not an isolated community. I mean, these communities like on the west side, huge industry and they support the college. And, and so I would just urge, because it is truly your decision that I, I mean, I would, you guys should do an external scan and look at other facilities and, and that. Because our findings are just based on our experience and working to just put the information in front of you so you can decide.
And another college to maybe speak to, um and these are just colleges that I know of, um Big Bend Community College. Right now, it's only half a mile away, not even maybe half a mile away, that they have a lot of their technical education programs. And one of the things that they are struggling to do is to bring them in because they said those students don't have access to any of the college environment. They don't have access to food services. They don't have access to the recreational gym, stuff like that. It's a struggle for them with those students and the students very vocally complain about it.
And one last thing that I would urge on your decision-making because to us, the most important probably decision fa- deciding factor and should be included, your decision would be the students. Because they're the ones that pay your enrollment and they're the, they're the ones that you're here. And their input, I think, is very important, even a little bit more than the industry.
And Robert, there's- Judy, no, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I've got a short bubble. Thank you. Uh that was a segue. I needed to thank you for what you've done. Uh appreciate the fact that we get to figure this out now, but you've given us some more information. More information that it would, I would welcome is uh in time, if our president can get from you the names of some schools. You've mentioned a couple either that are nearby that we can go see or that our staff can go and, and at least do other interviews and whatever it takes to gain more knowledge uh of what it's like for those who build a facility off-site as well as on, to find out what it's like for the students in those schools. So I guess that would be a request that goes back to our, our team here to continue to gather information. What you provided is, is, is a good start. Maybe there's some areas that we want to focus on more than you did. That's what we need to do as a board. There's some areas where I think you've defined it well. Our experience in touring in the facilities here and asking the folks on campus, did you have input? Because for us to use the knowledge, we need to be sure the folks here had input and the reply was yes. And the next question was, did you look at the report after it came out and did the input get reflected? And our understanding was that yes. The campus here felt like they were heard and the input is in here. So that gives us a basis from which to work. Now we get to think through uh what do we do with this and time and money are our two push, pressure points that, that I think are the reason why we're going to have some more public access information available, which you'll allure us to. That if we need to go tour individually or however we can do that, virtual tours may help. I would like to have that gathered up as some more, another round of information, please.
And if you have any questions past this point while you're reviewing and your decisions, if you could get them in writing to Ken or Joe and he can email them us and that way you guys will all get the answers so you're not asking the same questions.
Right. Are there any more questions of the, of either one?
Just a closing comment, that I agree with you, students are always first. They should be first at every educational institution. The faster we can get it built, the cheapest we can get it built, will be the opportunity to put more students in, students in the classroom. And, and so uh for you to maybe believe that I don't believe students are the most important thing, that is the mo- number one thing on this university campus.
All right, thank you very much. Um thank you very much for the report. Let me just sort of announce what's going to happen from this point on with regard to this report. This is, uh, we've received the report now. We'll consider this a first reading. Gives us a month to sort of digest it, get it out to the public. If there's any um significant questions about whether or not you've completed the contract that you entered into, um we raise them with you, uh but at the next meeting, hopefully there'll be a second reading and at that time we'll accept the report and the contract will be concluded. So just to give everybody kind of a context in which um we'll be doing this um, uh, this process. And also, uh in between now and then, we're going to be having some public meetings and I'm going to talk about that a little bit earlier. I, I've been slipped a note that everybody needs a break, so I'm going to ask that we take a break for about five or ten minutes. And I thank you very much for the report. Judy?
A clarification, when the board, when the report comes back to us and we accept it, that doesn't necessarily mean that we've agreed with everything in it.
No.
It means we've, it's, it's in our archives to work from, from here.
It means they've completed the contract.
Okeydoke. Thank you. Break time?
Break time.
Thank you.
Ten minutes. Thank you.